In progress.
All right, I'll do roll call. Mr. Commissioner Bartholomew. Commissioner Knutson. Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Stetts.
Here.
And Commissioner Dow.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the people for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my name is Ronald Elton, I'm new to the party and I'm present.
Has his name sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. Will he be?
If I could interrupt your meeting.
Right. But he, he's the alternate, right?
No.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'd like to introduce our three new planning commission members. We have Commissioner Ronald Elton, and he is a full-time member. We have Commissioner Michael Dow and Curtis Beckstrom, who are our alternates. They were appointed by the city council, or the county council last month. So we want to welcome them and thank them for their willingness to serve. And they have completed their required training to sit in and vote tonight.
Perfect. I apologize, I wasn't aware, and...
Communication's wonderful.
Well, and we're, I'm just not used to this full of a commission panel. We've not had this for a couple years. Thanks Kendall. All right, first item of business, election. What? Are you making fun of me already Kendall? Perfect. First item of business is election for the 2024 Chair and Vice Chair. I am taking nominations for, let's do Chair, Chairman first.
Who's been on the commission for most of the longest?
Blair has, and then I'm second.
Vice Chair, not Chair.
And I've been both.
So you're the Vice Chair?
Correct. Well, she's accepting.
I'm voting for him too.
She's accepting nominations.
I'm just kidding, yes. I make motion that we, or I nominate Commissioner Hope. Can I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Knutson. Any other nominee? Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, roll call. Let's do Commissioner Bartholomew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Knutson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Elton? And I vote yes. Congratulations, buddy.
I don't even know. I was gonna say, do I?
You're outvoted.
All right, fine, fine.
How do you vote?
Don't ask me, yes.
Okay, all right. Taking nominations for Vice Chair at this point. Oh, do I hand it over to you?
Uh, my own?
Yes.
I will nominate Camille Knutson. You open your...
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Have a motion, or we nominate Camille Knutson, seconded by Commissioner Stetts. Any others?
Can I just ask what your background is? I'd like to vote for you, but I'd like to know who I'm voting for.
Um, I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission what, a year now, a little bit over a year. Before that, I served as Vice Chair on the Tua County School Board of Education for four years. And I have my day job, if you will, I'm a policy analyst with the Department of Agriculture and Food.
Sounds like you're...
And she's currently running for state school board.
And I'm currently, yes.
Can you do both, you know?
Yes, I can. I actually received permission from the Commissioner, so.
Most importantly, she should show up her room.
Yeah, I do show up, yes.
Here on a regular basis.
All right, all in favor, oh, sorry. Commissioner Dow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Bartholomew?
Yes.
Commissioner Knut, or Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
And Commissioner Knutson. Perfect, I turn the time over to you.
Commissioner Elton, yes.
I was gonna say, I'm not that fast.
You're next. Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm in charge now?
Yeah.
Sup, I'm done. Well, welcome everybody, and welcome this evening. The next order of business on the agenda is rezones. And so, is Trish, uh, so this is on the Vincent Ulibari, is that, how you say that?
Libri.
Ulibri? Ulibri, requesting rezone from MU40 to A20.
Okay, I was trying to see if, uh... Oh, he is, okay. I just want to make sure I'm saying that right. So I'm sorry if I'm...
I said it three times.
I know. I was saying it wrong for like a whole year before he got corrected. Okay, so Trish Chiklo presenting REZ 2023-104. And, uh, so the applicant Vincent Ulibri is requesting a rezone. His original application is just for his property, his one little parcel of land out there. And, um... So in these properties, it's kind of tricky, so all of these, I don't know if you can see the map, but all of those are under a record of survey as protected ag land. So they cannot have any building permits on them, only ag uses. So raising crops or animals, they can have like ag-type structures, which are technically exempt from building permits anyway. So those are pretty much all that's allowed in that zone. Right now, they're currently zoned MU40. Which is not very conducive with the ag-protected areas to begin with. So when the applicant had suggested to rezon his property, so a little bit more background on these. So these lots have been for sale, quite a few of them off and on for quite a few years. So planning staff has had a lot of interest and phone calls of what they can do on their properties and stuff like that, and they're just ag-protected, right? So they cannot build homes currently, they can't do things like that in that nature. We've had quite a few people who have called angry because they didn't know when they first bought the property. So, and also, a lot of those properties, there's 26 lots in there. And I would say, I think I numbered it actually. Seven of those 26 are the only ones that can comply with the minimum acreage requirement in MU40's zone, the rest of those lots are about 20 acres in size. So even if they were, let's say down the road, if they wanted to build a homestead on it or something, they would have to go through this process anyway. So the applicant is requesting to do something similar, maybe further down the line. So he's just trying to get the process started. And so when staff had received this information, and quite a few of these properties have notices recorded on them saying that they would have to go through all these processes to make their lots buildable essentially. And so this would help a lot of those property owners get those notices released off their property, help comply with things, and then it would also further give those lots protection in the future for ag uses. Because if, right now if they stay MU40, if somebody came in and wanted to do a subdivision to make their lot buildable, they have to go through the subdivision process to make that buildable, to get that out of ag protection. That's what the state has required. So if they wanted to do something like that down the road, in that zone, in the MU40 zone, it could allow for a lot of other uses other than just ag. So it could use industrial uses, commercial uses, some certain uses like that. So if they were to rezon it to ag, it would only help further protect these properties for ag uses in the future. Even if they were to do a subdivision, like, like the applicant might want to do that in the near future to build a home on there or something. But then all those other properties are going to be, continue to be protected as well, so. So when the applicant had originally submitted his application, it was just for his lot, and he wants to be in the A20 zone. Staff is recommending that Planning Commission consider moving those lots to an A10 because there is one lot that is under that, they're at 18 acres. So there is one lot that would still want to be able to comply with a 20-acre minimum requirement. So we're just requesting that it goes to A10 to help that. Wouldn't that just be non-conforming? No. No, that's just to help them in the future, like they don't, that's just what staff is, is trying to help the property owners in the future. And to help them comply with certain aspects of the code. It's not going to take their ag protection away, it's not going to change anything around that area essentially. It's just going to help them comply with zoning codes in that area.
So he's not mentioned any... What's the word, current options of development?
Yeah, he, he's expressed interest in just building a home in there in the future. I don't know what that timeline may be like, I don't know if that's really what his end goal really might be. He can, he's online, he can speak for that himself. But, like I said, if rezoning it to A, to ag uses, there's only a very limited number of things he can do on that property, right? If it was MU40 and left that way and they were, I mean, there could be a lot more uses on that property.
So point of clarification, is this buy or adjoining Chen Val's property and his? Is it, where is his, just for reference?
His is all sold.
His what?
His is all sold.
So then, okay, thank you, that's what I was trying to get. So that was consistent?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, okay, got it. And to be clear, there's no utility now, right? I mean, there's nothing there, so, okay.
Yeah, so if you can look at the map, it's just off of, it's just west of South Room essentially, off of Silver Avenue, it's pretty close, right there off that Canyon Road. And if you look at this other area and the other two, you can see those two lots right there at the south, they're already A10. So it just helped be conducive in that area. And also, our general plan has determined most of this area be ag. So it would help comply with the general plan.
When are questions appropriate?
For, for her, when she's done, then you can ask her questions.
I can take them anytime, when we're in discussion, that's fine. But I'll just finish up with our, with our staff analysis. So, um, like I said, there's one parcel that is below that 20 acres, and so staff is just requesting that you consider it to be an A10 just to help everybody in there comply with the minimum acreage amounts. I did send, before, before I sent the public notice for the meeting tonight, I also sent like a courtesy notice to the, to all those property owners that we have on record saying that this could be a possibility, that they, they're welcome to come when there is a meeting. And I explained all those things in that letter, saying that it's just going to further help them be conducive to the general plan. It's going to help protect their ag uses, it's going to help them comply with minimum acreage amounts. And I gave them, I let them know that the rezon was requested for A20, but the staff is going to recommend it to A10, but that's up to you as a board to determine what's going to be best for that area. And, yeah, that's, that's the end of the staff recommendation, so, yeah, questions? Is this, we have a similar application to this in August, is that correct, or is that? No, not on these.
Wasn't that the road?
Oh, yeah, so the applicant applied for the private road ECP, and so he did gain approval for that for, off of, it's Mud Springs Road up to his...
So same applicant, correct?
Yes, it's the same applicant, so he's, he's trying to get through the process that, so that he can make this lot possibly buildable or just deduce anything with it in the future, right? And there are recorded easements all through there already, so he just took that easement and he just created a private road off of that.
Okay.
Could you tell us what the applicant's response is to your proposal for A10?
I haven't heard, but I am, he is online, can he talk on it? Vincent?
We're okay, thank you.
There, there he is.
Hello, Mr.?
Ulibari?
I'm gonna butcher your name, is it Ulibari?
Ulibri?
Ulibri, you live, thank you, thanks, I apologize. So the, the question that Commissioner El, El?
Allen.
Elton? Stands, how, what is your response to Tua County's development department recommending A10 over your requested A20?
Yeah, first, you know, thank you guys for taking the time and reviewing this. And I have no reservations about, you know, the difference from A20 to A10. As long as it's in compliance, right now, you know, none of the properties are in compliance, so you just can't do anything with them, you know? We're just planning to have horses up there, maybe have a barn up there, and it just, it's, you know, without it being zoned correctly and in compliance, you just can't do anything. And so, the reason I initially filed for A20 is I think that that was the initial recommendation. It was like, you know, most of the properties was fit in that A20 minimum acreage. And so, you know, A10 doesn't, I have any reservations about that.
I do have two more.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Can you tell us where this property is with respect to the general plan map? I couldn't find it.
Yeah, so all these properties in this area with the general plan, it's suggested that they're all going to be ag.
But where's it on the general plan map?
I have an attachment, let's see if you can... Kind of see, I don't know, it's kind of on that west end of that, right here.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
I don't know if you can tell where that, it's like right here. Yeah, yep, oh yeah, there it is.
But it doesn't show it on there though, does it?
No, you, like, you can't see the specific lots and stuff like that, but when you look, yeah, it's where her cursor's at, so it should, it would come off that Canyon Road, yeah. Right straight off of west of Silver Avenue.
So I was looking for a big ax when I looked.
I know, mark it there.
And then the third question I have is, how were these properties created, agriculture protected? And who created them?
They were created by a record of survey. And so it kind of looks similar to a plat map where they...
But who did it?
Line out, um, I'm not sure, it was done way before my time.
And there's nothing on there, the record of survey that prevents it from being rezoned?
No. So they, oh, let's see, I have that record of survey attached too. So if you look at that record of survey, it has been signed by the, a bunch of departments in the county. I can't tell what all their signatures are.
Oh, my only question was, is there anything on there, it's pretty small, that limits or restricts the rezon?
No, so when, when something like this happens for, when they're ag-protected, they stay like this until they go through the proper procedures to do so. And so that's kind of what this process would initiate. They don't lose their ag protection until after they've gone through the subdivision process. So even the rezon and all that stuff won't affect any of the ag protection.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Trish? So I believe we will move, I'll accept a motion for open public hearing.
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, I make a motion, we can open public hearing.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dow. Public hearing is now open. If there's anybody in the public that would like to...
A question, if you have a motion to open it, you need to vote.
Correct, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. So if there's, if there's anybody in the public would like to comment, please state your name, where you're from, and then address your concern.
Come up.
Come up to the podium. Is there anybody online, Rochelle?
I don't see any hands at this time, so.
Yes, sir, please approach the podium, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Leonard Jordan. The question I have...
Where are you from?
I'm from Stockton, I have property out there.
Okay.
In that plat or whatever.
Okay.
If this goes to A10, if I'm understanding this correctly, I'm still protected green belt usage unless in the future I decide to subdivide my lots. Am I, is that correct?
Is there a minimum for green belt?
I have .01.
Okay.
Okay. And then, how, so what exactly is A10 different from A40? Is that?
Size.
Two 10-acre lots, and does that restrict how that easement? Or would that be on that 20, you know, if I had a 20-acre lot? How, how, I mean, when going to A10, would I have to then get surveys to divide that, or how?
No, 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 so you can say the same, the difference is the size. The only benefit, if you want to consider a benefit for yourself, is you yourself, if you wanted to subdivide, you could in the future, right, but you don't do anything. Whatever you're doing stays the same, unless you want to change it.
Okay, and then, it was mentioned that there's limited on A40. So what is the difference of agriculture use that I would get going from A40 to A10? What is the difference in that?
Are we, are we having a discussion right now, or is it public comment?
So you're going from MU40 to A10, right?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Multiple use 40, which is a whole different category, a whole bunch of other things you can use that for.
Okay.
So, so like Trish mentioned, the going to agricultural will protect the property from going to manufacturing, industry, industrial, or the case of, it'll stay, so your case is a conservative green belt? I can't tell you what to do, but this would align with your vision.
Okay. So, so right now it's MU40, not A40, okay.
Correct, so somebody could apply to manufacture something, build something, drill something.
All right, thank you.
And we just lost them.
Wonderful.
Well, there was no hands.
There was no hands raised, so I think we're okay, so, oh, there's somebody else, welcome.
Recording in progress.
All right, my name's Lacey Burrows, and, is that all you need?
Where are you from?
Rush Valley.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, and I am a property owner up there as well. I have no objections to being changed to agriculture, but I hesitate going to 10 acres, and I just want to state that as my opinion. I, I don't really think it's necessary, if 20's probably okay. But it's just my opinion, I think you'd be better to stay in at least 20, but preferably 40, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close public hearing.
So moved? So Commissioners, is there?
You need a second?
All in favor?
Oh, all in, I'm sorry.
You need a second?
All second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for the tally, that's good. So Commissioners, now's the time for you to ask questions or comment.
Excuse me?
Now would be the time for your questions or comments, if you have any.
They're all answered.
So I just want to clarify, if we, only if we did the 20, that 18-acre lot is useless. That landowner would not be able to use it, correct? They would still have to rezon A10. Okay, just that one lot? Mm-hmm. Okay, but they would have to bring it to us? Yeah. Whereas this way? Thank you. Yes.
For clarification, the, the lot that is 18 acres could do a spot rezon and do A10 even if the rest of the lots were zoned A20?
It wouldn't be a spot rezon because there are similar zones around there. But yeah, so they could essentially just do their one property, it's cohesive for that area.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman. Are you ready for a motion?
I would accept the motion if nobody else has any further comments, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion that we recommend, or can we approve this? Recommend to council. We meant, recommend to the county council favorably. The rezon A2023-014 for 10-acre agriculture.
A10?
A10.
So it's been motioned, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Does that require a roll call vote?
Yes.
So roll call vote. Commissioner Elton?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope was a yes, Commissioner Stetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bartholomew?
Yes.
It passes unanimously, unanimously, so thank you very much. The next agenda item is rezon, wait, nope.
General plan.
I lied, send a name to the general plan, right? So Trish, you can handle that, the transportation master plan?
I can do my best. We actually have a consultant here that's going to answer all of your questions for you. But, yeah, this is a transportation plan that the county's needed for a long time, but it's a very large, very in-depth packet, so we'll turn it over to the consultant.
Awesome. Can I, can I make a overlying comment?
Yes.
If I may, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, then please correct me.
I realize why it's so long.
No, heck no, no, not, no, I just want to set precedence for, for the audience and new Commissioners. What you're going to hear is transportation, the transportation plan that we as a county feel is our need. But please understand that if it is a state highway, state freeway, state road, we have no control. We make recommendations to the state, they make approvals of monies that come to our county. So the cart before the horse, call it what you want, the chicken before the egg. If you don't want growth, we don't get money. You don't have money, you don't have growth. So just understand that mindset as we move into further recommendations of the transportation plan.
Oh, no, I didn't mess your thing up, so.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, that it wasn't.
There we go. Okay, well, all of you have read all 276 pages of this report, right?
We're ready for that test.
You're ready, okay.
I stopped the prayer at page 56.
There you go. Well, I appreciate you letting me come and, first off, introduce myself and discuss the transportation plan with you. I've been working with Rochelle and her team for the past basically year, almost year and three months on this project. The consultant firm that I work for is Jones and DeVill Engineering. We also had a sub-consultant called WCG Wall Consulting, Consulting Group. They helped us with the transportation modeling that we did within this plan, and I'll get more into depth, or more detail on that here in a second. I've done probably 20 of these plans in the last two years. So I've, I've seen a lot of Utah, basically, a lot of counties, a lot of cities. And it's awesome to see these plans come together. So that's an introduction on me. I just wanted to talk about the planning process for a second. The first stage that we did on this plan was data collection. You probably saw these two little tubes crossing some of the roads within the county. Those were data collection... Um, those were data collection, um, counters that count the types of vehicles, um, the number of vehicles and the speed of those vehicles. Um, so that's part of our data collection. Also, part of it is getting all of UDOT's plans, all of the city's plans, and the existing county data that they had, um, put together and brought into a, a mapping software so we could, um, put that together. Um, the second stage of this was modeling, which WCG helped us with. Um, UDOT has a pretty extensive model of Twilla County because of the sheer growth that it's seen in the last decade. Um, and so their model's pretty extensive. We actually used their model and modified it to update it to the county level. Um, so we took that existing data from UDOT, we updated the model and determined what roads are choke points. A lot of those are UDOT roads and like Commissioner Hope said, um, it's, it's a I guess I'm at a loss of what to do on the UDOT roads because they have jurisdiction over those. Yes. Um, but what we looked at specifically is what could help those roads within the county? On the county side, what can the county do to help those roads? As well as provide alternate routes for people to use besides those sideways. Um, because the county's, the county's, um, purpose as well as the, as UDOT's is to provide interconnectivity from city to city, town to town and throughout the county. So we did, we ran the model, we ran a, a base model, we ran a twenty forty model and a twenty fifty model. Twenty fifty, we, um, projected that full buildout would occur, which isn't necessarily going to happen, but we wanted to look at what the full buildout looked like. Um, and so this is the plan. Um, I want to emphasize that, that it depends on how quickly you grow, how s- I mean, you could grow slow, you could grow really fast. Um, this is all just a plan to let you know what needs to happen when you start to grow. Um, the purpose of a plan too is so that you're preserving those corridors when developers come in. You're preserving those roads that need to go in, um, at a later time. Um, so we completed the modeling for those three periods of time. Uh, we did a safety analysis. Um, Rochelle asked us to put together, um, a s- a, a specific safety analysis and I'm gonna pull that up really quick. Uh, this safety analysis looked into types of crashes within the county, um, and then brought all of that data, types of crashes with, um, geometry issues, things like that, brought all that together. And then this plan will help you with grants in the future. So adopting this into your plan can help you get money later on. Um, I'm just gonna share five really quick things about that. Um, we call it the five Es of the safety plan. So there's engineering aspects that need to be looked at on the safety side, education, so educating drivers, of course. Um, enforcement, so that's your, your sheriff's office. Um, emergency and medical services, and then everyone. So everyone has, um, on the forefront of their mind, safety and bringing that, um, to a point where the goal is zero fatalities, right? Um, and Twilla County's done a really good job at that, but we can always do better. Um, moving on from the safety analysis, um, something that's really nice about these plans that we're putting together for counties and cities and towns is we're making them electronic because we've, we've made plans in the past and we've spent countless hours on them and then they sit and collect dust on somebody's shelf. Um, so if you look at the screen, um, we have a, a full transportation map that gives you the general summary of what the whole plan is. If you wanted to get into the details of like access management, um, and things like that, you can pull up that two hundred seventy-page report and look that up. Um, so I'm just gonna quickly run through this. Um, this is a map of, on the left-hand side, a, of the existing transportation, um, what's called roadway classification. There's different classes, so like highways are gonna have higher traffic, your local roads are gonna have very minimal traffic. So the left-hand side shows your existing classification, existing roadway network. Your left-hand set, or sorry, your right-hand side of the screen shows you, shows your future. Um, some of the hot areas that we looked at were of course I eighty and, um, oh, I'm blanking on the highway.
Thirty-six.
Two oh one, two oh one and thirty-six, yes. Um, then we also looked at, um, basically other ways to connect the county to the other side of the mountain, right? Um, there's a choke point at Highway thirty-six, a choke point on Highway eighty during rush hour and other times there's always issues there. Those are the specific areas we looked at, as well as connectivity through the, through the county. And so when you get time, or if you haven't had time, go on and look at these roads, um, and you'll see the roads that we proposed. I'll get into a few of those specific roads here in a second. Um, the roadway surface type, this is just general information. So you have paved roads, um, dirt roads and gravel roads. This is your average daily traffic. This is also going to help you with your safety analysis as well as, um, helping you with funding in the future. Um, this is gonna give you the average daily traffic that I talked about with those tubes that we put out. So this count had four thousand eight hundred vehicles a day and these are the different types of vehicles that were in that. Um, this is your safety data. If it will love. So you can see there's a heat map. Um, the yellow areas, of course, that is the highway and that's where the most, most of your crashes are occurring. This is an active transportation plan, um, that shows different trail networks within the county. Um, this is always an ongoing discussion because of the new legislature that came out for the bike path, um, infrastructure bill. Um, and so this will continue to change, I'm sure, as time goes on. Um, this is your future road phasing. So when we looked at the model and we proposed new roads, this is going to tell you based on our model, um, with the proposed growth factor that we put in the model, when these roads need to be built. So for example, um, this is the O- Ocker Expressway. Is that the correct?
Mid Valley.
Mid Valley Highway. Yes, sorry. Um, this is phase two of Mid Valley Highway. Um, and this bottom piece, if I can pull it up. This is also Mid Valley Highway. So we're seeing that those, that those blue lines need to be built between twenty twenty, twenty thirty-three and twenty forty-two. Um, these yellow lines are lines that need to be built beyond twenty fifty. So those are roads that aren't necessarily needed right now. The red lines are roads that need to be built between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-two. And then green, um, are roads that need to be built between twenty forty-three and twenty fifty. Any questions on that?
Is the Mid Valley Highway designated on your map? I couldn't see that designation.
That's who he's pointing out.
I know, but I didn't see it identified as the Mid Valley Highway.
This one?
Well, I'm not sure. Is it the dotted one?
Yeah.
The blue dotted one? So my question is, I'm looking at the map. I could not see where it was designated, Mid Valley Highway.
Yeah, so we, we do not put, we don't associate names necessarily with the roads. We just give generic road, road location.
Well, you've got other things like Ocker Expressway and Depot Bounty Road. Those are all identified?
Let's see. Ocker Expressway is this one? And we can label those. I don't have an issue doing that. Typically in the map, we just show them as, as a general road and then-
Well, there's been a lot of planning on that. I, I was looking all over for it by name. I couldn't see it. And it ends in Twilla City?
Which one?
The Mid Valley Highway.
Yes.
Will you go back to Mid Valley Highway, please?
Yes.
And the, uh, down, the conglomeration of white buildings to right there, is that? The industrial depot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, okay, so it's like, and right there, Utah Avenue.
Yeah, so there's, there's been several discussions on this, um, with UDOT. UDOT's plan for this road has changed more times than I can count.
Well, yeah, I understand since it's-
Um, and so we put it in as of the latest discussion that we had with UDOT.
Well, it makes sense because, I mean, this thing was birthed, I think in two thousand two. It was the, the origination of this, the mid, the midway, Mid Valley Highway. But since then, I, I believe it will stay there in my opinion because to go from there, you have to go in front of the technical college area where that, that ground is now being purchased for more technical college area. And then where it was going to end was just adjacent to your side of the, the Twilla Army Base, that has been annexed, I mean, not annexed. That agreement has been, that talk has been nixed since nine eleven. The, uh, the government is not willing to forego that property. So I, I think, I really think that that's where it's gonna stop.
And, and the reason we stopped it there is because the industrial area is a, I mean, there's a lot that would have to change in there for that to go through.
Yep.
Um, not to say that that couldn't happen in the future, but based on our model, this takes care of most of the congestion that we looked at.
Well, and with the proposed inland port, I don't see it changing.
Right.
Isn't inland port over?
It's all that one.
Oh, I thought it was all over.
Between, it's between Mid Valley Highway and Shepherd Lane.
Shepherd Lane, Shepherd Lane.
I thought it was closer to Burmester.
I believe there's some proposed-
That's part of it too.
Yeah.
There's several aspects.
Second one, the original one was right by the, uh-
Can you remind me the dotted black lines? What do those mean again?
Uh, this is actually real.
No, sorry. When you were down with like Twilla City, there, see all the random-
Around the, around the industrial depot she's looking at.
Yeah.
Oh, please.
To, nope.
Is that what you're talking about?
No. Well, yeah, like right there. What does that dotted black line right there mean?
Right in the middle.
This one. Rogers?
So those are-
Those are existing.
Okay.
Yeah. This one here. Let me zoom in on that. I don't, I think-
Is that one thousand north?
I think this one. The problem is, is, uh, one, one thing with this map is our GIS doesn't update as quickly as Google Earth does. So sometimes the map doesn't correlate with the update of your own maps that we have. Um, which is unfortunate, honestly, but we haven't been able to-
Yeah.
Find a way to make that work. Cause you can see every other road in here, like this one. That shows an existing road there. That one shows an existing road. They all have roads on them. And I think this one comes through now, but the image just isn't updated.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. That's the railway, isn't it?
That's just the route, right? And an access road.
Yeah.
That's just an easement.
I'm gonna check on that one and see if that-
Well, it's not a pose, it's a road.
Nope. Yeah, there's one thousand north right there.
And then dotted red, those are proposed roads then?
Yeah, dotted roads are either, um, existing or a classification change. So they're different projects within the master plan that are proposed and this is when those projects need to happen. So, so getting, on that note, um, the short-range TIP list are the projects that need to happen within the next ten years. The long-range plan is when, um, projects in the next twenty. Um, so you can-
So when was the Mid Valley Highway designated to be completed?
That one's not, that one's out.
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
It's had, it's had-
So according to, according to UDOT, it's out a ways, but there's, I think there's also discussions on moving that up.
Alright. Where do you have it on your plan?
Out in twenty forty-three to twenty fifty. That's what you don't have that right now.
And they approved it, don't you?
It's not funded.
Yeah, it's not funded yet.
That was gonna be my next question and I apologize if I'm jumping ahead-
No, you're okay.
-your presentation. Um, with these red lines that are immediate needs, right?
Uh huh.
I noticed that there are some amounts that are listed in here.
Yes.
Is that proposed? Proposed amounts?
So these, so let's take Burmester, for example. We're working, we're actually working on this right now. Um, if you did the whole road in twenty thirty, you'd be forty million.
Kendall, do we have forty million?
Do an analysis.
Granted, one thing to know on these estimates is we've inflated these by about eight, well, a certain percentage every year. We actually use a UDOT spreadsheet to inflate them.
Sure.
So these are inflated to twenty thirty costs. They're not in today's dollars.
So it could be thirty-five million.
Yeah. If inflation slows down, yes. Um, if you click on this one, you can see, um, this is another road construction for the depot road. That's another one that's very expensive.
Yeah, and all equals growth.
Yes.
How much is the road that extends the two oh one?
This one?
Yeah.
So this is Ocker Expressway. This is a portion of it. It's thirty-three.
I know.
And then this portion of it is twenty.
So fifty million, fifty-five, fifty-three.
Is that proposed, a county road or a state road?
Um, that's up for debate. That's an excellent question.
Did you say we decide? Oh, I thought you said you decided.
Most likely, I, most likely my thought on it would be UDOT would take that on, um, because it would connect into two oh one.
Okay.
So, but it also, if there's funding that can only go to the county, then it might have to be the county that takes it on.
Um, can I ask a, I, maybe it might be a random question, I'm not sure. Isn't a lot of that property BLM property?
Yes.
Part of it, most of it though, that comes off Ericson Road is, um, Wildlife Management Unit.
Originally, we actually had this road going all the way south to, um, the canyon or down to this road here. But this is what is the word I'm looking for? Rochelle, conserve?
Conservation.
Conservation. Yeah.
Yeah, but, but even where you proposed start is the Wildlife Management Unit.
So we're coming, this is a vision, correct?
Yeah, there's right.
Correct. There's for sure gonna have to be, there's hurdles on all of these roads that you're gonna have to-
Sure, sure. You gotta start somewhere.
Um, and so the, the point of the plan is to show the roads that need to happen for the growth that's going to come. Not to say that this is going to happen by twenty fifty, but you need to look at it as, as you grow. I mean, really, you're looking further than twenty fifty, so. Any questions specifically on the maps? I know that's a lot of information to look at, um, and I think Rochelle, do you have the link to this that you could send them still? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna jump over to this, um, portion. This is just the documents tab. Um, when the report, we, we put the report, or Rochelle put the report in your packets, but we're going to upload that report, um, once it's all finalized into this. This also has linked into the, into this plan, all of your websites, basically. So this becomes kind of a one-stop shop. So you have your general plan, road department, you can click on that. Um, Twilla Land Use Ordinance, that's, pulls up there. Um, and the Twilla County GIS portion as well.
After it's adopted or now?
All of these are linked right now. The plan is not in there yet.
Okay, that's what my question was.
Yes.
So if the public wanted to look at it, where would it be available?
It's, it's in the agenda packet online.
The public can access that?
Yes. Okay, um. I'm gonna jump to the public involvement portion and then we can open the public hearing. Um, so just to talk about what we did as far as public involvement goes. We held a public open house in November. We also talked with each municipality and asked them for their um plans. So like Twilla City, Lake Point, all of those municipalities, we asked them for the their existing plans. And incorporated those into them, the ones that had them. So for example, in the map. For roadway classification network. Grantsville recently had a plan done for the west side of Grantsville. And so we incorporated their plan into the county plan as well. Um, so we got all of the, all of their information, brought it in and then decided how to how to bring that in to the counties. Um, then we. We finalized things and got through the majority of the process. This last November, we held a public open house here in the commission chambers. Um, and discussed things with the public. We also advertised in the paper. Um with a QR code where the public could um respond. We only got sixteen responses through that QR code that we put in the paper. Half of those were miscellaneous, um ones where people just like typed yes or no or something like that. The other half, um or a little more than the other half were. Discussions on relieving SR thirty-six and IA congestion. Um, half of those comments were about the road east of Lake Point. Um. This one here going around the hill. Um, the other half were specifically um discussing IAD and SR thirty-six. And asking for solutions to congestion on those roads, so. Um. As far as um addressing those issues, we looked at that in the modeling, of course. Um, and a lot of these roads take care of that. We suggested three solutions for connectivity within the county. Um, one would be the the road connecting into two oh one. The other is this black line, which is not the preferred option because it's billions of dollars to construct. But going over the mountain through here, um through Kennicott. Um, there was a study done by UDOT on that and it was just the tunneling alone was like. Fifty billion or something like some crazy amount like that. So it's not very economical. Um, there's also potential to connect in on this side of the county as well. Um, but those are the three main connectivities. The reason this one was put in the plan was it. In our model, it relieved the most congestion on thirty-six. Um, any questions for me?
Mister Chair, when would be appropriate for us to ask questions before or after the public?
No, you can ask him questions now.
Okay, well, I'll let the other chair go, other chair people go.
I'm I'm just, first of all, if I may. Can I catch your name again?
McLean.
McLean, Mister McLean. Uh, thank you. For your due diligence and efforts, right? I love the vision. I I totally appreciate this. I've been involved in several of these projects for many, many years and I understand the conundrum between the state and the county. I I totally get it. But we have to have a vision. We have to have a place to start and I truly, truly appreciate that. My vision, my hope, my desire is that we can uh continue to collaborate better.
Right.
With the state and other larger entities who have money, clout and property to make these uh easements happen. And I wish, you know, it's interesting, the number one thing in my opinion, uh a concern in this county is not only growth, but traffic, right? But the irony is, is nobody wants growth. Well, rooftops cost tax dollars, it's caused the state to say, you deserve it. Every time we say no to large developments, to large invest investors, we say no to growth. We say no to infrastructure. So it makes no sense and it's very, very uh interesting how this audience is so fooled. Being that's the number one or number two concern in our county. Very interesting, but I I truly, truly appreciate it. Um, if we don't have a vision, there is no growth, right? And so everybody says, with no offense, I don't want that in my backyard. Well, nobody wants it in their backyard, but the reality is is. The problem is not the growth, the problem is how you manage the growth.
Right.
Right? And and we have to have this. So I I'm I'm truly appreciative of your efforts.
Well, you appreciate being able to work on the project as well, so.
I've reviewed the plan and it appears to be well done. Thank you. I do have a couple of dumb questions.
Okay.
Uh, looked up in the dictionary pedestrian, and I think I gotta guess what it is, but it's not defined in the Webster's dictionary. E D E S T R I A N. Is that pedestrian and vehicle bicycles?
Pedestrian?
E E pedestrian. Um.
It's not fair to point out typos.
Page tw- well, I.
Yeah, you you tell me where that's at and I need to fix it.
Page twenty-six, but I don't know. Well, I did find some wild references on Google.
We need to hire you to become our uh QC. Just kidding.
I thought I knew what that was. Any page?
What what page was that on?
Um, it's either page twenty-six or paragraph twenty-six. I didn't make made good notes on that, but it's the definition.
I'll look at, I'll look, I'll do a control F on a pedestrian.
So you don't know what an pedestrian is?
I know.
Okay, thanks. So. I do have a question. Some of these roads that you've identified, other than Mid Valley, it's an SR one thirty-eight extension. Druby Road. Where's that one?
Oops.
SR one thirty-eight extension Druby Road.
Drew Bay, is that?
Drew Bay, yeah, Drew Bay.
Over ten years is Drew Bay, Scott.
Yeah, my classmate is Richard Druby, Druby now is Drew Bay, so.
Let's see, I gotta remember where this is.
SR one thirty-eight extension Drew Bay Road. So I think I know where one thirty-eight is, but how does it get to Drew Bay Road? Let's see if I can remember where that was.
So one thirty-eight is down.
Page sixty-nine, maybe, I don't know.
It's Pol Canyon.
So it's right here. So this, you can see this green line or this green line. It's extending that road. Up through here to this is Drew, uh Drew Bay Road is this one, I believe.
I got you.
No, it's Mills Junction, it's right there.
How about four hundred west?
Four, four hundred west extension.
Is that four hundred west in what city? I couldn't find that.
I know.
Can I s- do you know what page you're on?
Oh, I don't know, maybe. Page what, sixty-nine?
It can go up through Druby, Drew Bay because they have that right now. They just extended, made that nice intersection. And it goes up through um where the hall trucks get.
Yeah, this intersection has been.
How about page uh sixty-nine, table fifty, maybe? My notes aren't the best.
Page sixty-nine?
Maybe. Maybe not. I don't know, do it. How about thirty-three Parkway Extension?
Thirty-third Parkway. Here I can.
Can you do word searches on there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'll check.
Thirty-third Parkway.
Thirty-six.
Sheeplane.
Oh, Sheeplane.
Thirty-third Parkway. It's a new road.
Oh, he's like, I heard thirty-six and Sheeplane. They apparently.
Okay, so one thirty-eight extension is this one.
Which one is it?
That third, one one thirty-eight extension is this one.
Okay, okay.
Okay, what was the next one?
It was uh four hundred west.
Four hundred west. I wanna say it's this one.
In Tulsa City, is that Tulsa City?
Yeah, this one here, that red one. Do you see that?
Where's your cursor at?
Right there. Can you see that?
Uh, it's going north and south?
Yeah.
Correct.
Highlight.
Oh, I know where it is. It's in Tulsa City. And thirty-three.
Down street where.
Thirty-three, yeah, down through it or thirty-three Parkway? Yeah, that four hundred west was, yeah, I should have known that.
Thirty-third.
Thirty-third Parkway.
Off of Simmeron, Simmeron Way?
It's just south of.
Okay.
And they started, they kinda started reading it, you can tell on the road down there.
Okay, I think they've, I think they've told me where that is.
Okay.
So I did have.
I apologize, I'm not very familiar with names. I'm used to addresses.
So I did have Walker, I did have Walker.
You don't know addresses.
He told me where that was and the depot was south boundary, I would assume. Depot Boundary Road, south south of the depot.
Sorry, I'm interrupting.
Just a general question. You've indicated that we need to preserve corridors. I assume that would be up to the county commission to figure that out.
So you've actually created a list of the ones you should keep. Um, the reason we did that is because um the county. Needs to be able to have jurisdiction on connectivity. So the ones that are essential for connectivity from like say Erda to Stansbury Park or from uh. Grantsville to Twilla City, they need to keep those um under their jurisdiction and then the others, they can allow cities to annex.
So do you think this adoption of this map would designate those corridors or?
Yes, it's in, it's actually in the document. It's part of an appendix.
All right, county commission is gonna have to do the legal work on getting that done. Uh, page seventy-six.
Commissioner Elton will choose to make a favorable recommendation.
I I could do that. Page seventy-six seems to end end the page without a completion of the sentence. Eight point two point two point one, page seventy-six.
Page seventy-six?
I think that's what it is.
Is it page seventy-six of the agenda or?
I don't know, it's eight point two point two point one.
Okay.
So it's seventy-five or seventy-six in first.
Seventy-six of mine.
So, yeah, it just seems to quit there and I looked for it further on, but I didn't find anything. Mind it. It says taking is necessary for use comma, see the construction and then it and and then it quits. Maybe it's different on your page. Mine says seventy-six of two seventy-seven. It's eight point two point two point one.
It is the pages of the agenda.
So it's your page, it's your page seventy-six of two seventy-seven, actual page forty-one of the doc.
Where do you see the numbers?
And where is it in there?
It's underneath it. So it, yeah, so seventy-six of two seventy-seven or actual page forty-one of your master.
Okay, I think something got cut out because in this document. It's correct, so I'll just make sure the.
What does it say?
Exercise the planning and zoning authority and get across that.
Yeah, planning and zoning authority.
Taking is necessary for such use, construction and and then it quits.
Yeah.
Construction of use of a roadway within the corridor, within the time specified, additional damages might be payable to the property owner.
It's got four pages.
All right.
It's not brought up on the.
All right, so you've got it and we're good now.
Okay, so the packet.
So there's that one right there and there's this one right here.
Oh, okay, there's two of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, there's two, cut off.
Okay. I'll, I'll send you the, it might have been in the downloading. I don't know, I'll look at that. But I have the, I have the the correct, correct document, so.
Just I have one final question. I didn't see it in the documentation. How many Tulsa County residents travel to the Wasatch Front each day for work?
Say that again, sorry.
How many Tulsa County residents travel to the, out of Tulsa County Wasatch Front each day to work?
That's a great question. I do not have an answer for that.
I think that would be the top of this, never mind.
Somebody said seventy-eight percent?
Seventy-two.
I'd heard a couple of years ago it was ten thousand vehicles a day, but I'm sure it's more than that now.
So it's seventy, seventy-two percent, our expert said back there.
Oh, yeah.
My expert.
Hey, you're talking like one.
All right, thank you. That's my questions.
They're good.
Okay. So any commissioners, any further questions for the showman?
Mister Chairman, I move we open public hearing.
It's been motionally open public hearings. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Although, do the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody online?
For public hearing?
Nobody with their hand raised at this time, Chair.
Wonderful. Is anybody in the public who'd like to address this issue? Since you came in mass parties? Seeing none, I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
Although, do the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Commissioners, any further discussion, concerns, questions on this issue? If not, I would entertain a motion of something.
To recommend?
I can't tell you that.
I'm not prepared to pass this along. There's a couple of. Can we get some of the things fixed or at least get the downloaded version to be adopted?
Yeah. If you'd like, I could get, if Rochelle's okay with this. Um, we could get the the actual document put into the story map. Um, that makes it so it's hosted online and then it doesn't become so laggy and it, issues with downloading and things don't happen. Um.
So let me just ask a question. I'm prepared to make a motion to recommend approval. If we could just see the two pages that are cut off and you could tell us what those are, I think that's the only question I have, unless you need more time to look at it.
I I feel like I do. Plus, there's a couple of things going before the state center right now that might affect us, right? Yeah, there's a couple of bills that are in part of the legislative session that deal with that.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend that this be, um, recommend that the county commission adopt this.
So there's a motion for a favorable recommendation to the county council. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
There's a second. So a roll call, wait, sorry, first and second, any further discussion?
Not after a motion, thank you.
Roll call. Commissioner Elton.
Yay.
Commissioner Ken Newton.
You were saying, can I ask him him a question?
Technically, no.
Can I just clarify something really quick? Point of clarification, we can get a copy that will show the updated, the correct information that we are approving tonight, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Then yes, I will go ahead and say yes.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Yes.
Mister Scott?
No.
Commissioner Hope votes yes. Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Now?
No.
So it is a five to two, that's the majority, so it does pass.
Chairman?
Yes.
On the nose, can we get some clarification as to why for the county council?
Mister Scott, why do you say no?
I think there's a couple of um issues I need clarified. Um, and also. I mean, this is a long-term plan. We're taking into our general plan. This is what we'll be using to. Make all our other decisions on the planning side, so I just wanna make sure I can get it right. And not hope that the changes and corrections get in there. That's why I voted no.
And your reason?
Um, I'm mere Commissioner Scott's concern. Um, I think this is a very well. Uh, detailed plan that has been presented. Um, I do see some inconsistencies with the. Roads proposed on the east side as far as um legality, you know, working with the BLM. And the conservation district. And, uh, the conservation district, and also with, uh, Rio Tinto who. Works with the state on that conservation district, and so I would just like some further clarification. Before we proceed.
Okay, would you like me to address that?
So let me finish the vote first, but, please, um, so it's been motioned, it's been seconded, it's been voted on, so approves five to two. Right, so motion stands. That said, be- um, before you do, for, for the benefit of the, the commission and any public, so if I may, and, and please Rochelle's. Trish, someone correct me if I'm wrong. And not that it matters, but I think it's good clarification. The, uh, general plan and the transportation plan is a guide, it's not law, it's not gospel, it's not in stone. It's a vision, right? If we don't have something, we have nothing. Obviously, no, and to, to your, uh, concern and not to, to debate by any means. Yes, there's concerns, he's willing to admit it, there's a BLM issue, there's a Rio Tinto issue, there's a conservation issue, we got that, but we have to have some kind of an option. That appears to me, it's one of, one of the most feasible options, so again, it's a vision. It's just, this is kinda good, the good, good education on, on all of our parts, because this is no different than a, the process of developing property. Going from a rezone, to, to a, uh, general plan, to a development permit, yada, 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 right? Everything has to go through those legal processes, this is the first step in that process, it can change. I mean, it's, it's a living live document, right, it can change, just like the general plan, I say that because so many people get. We've all heard it, very vibrantly, verbally upset in our meetings, because it's, you went against the general plan, well, it's not in law. I mean, the general plan's changed how many times since I lived here, it's a guideline, and so it's just really important to understand that, and. And it doesn't stop here, I mean, there could be a road we don't even think of, and some guy says, Rio Tinto says, hey, man, go for it. Be, whatever the case may be, it's just a vision, so I'm not saying I'm gonna change your vote, 'cause I can't, but just to get clarification on what they're trying to do, it's just simply a vision.
And Mister Chairman, we're not, I, I'll speak for myself, I'm not voting no to this transportation plan. I'm voting no right now until some corrections and clarifications, that's.
No, wonderful, so please, go ahead, Mr..
Um, just, um, on that note, could I, maybe afterwards, if you could just state those corrections? Are they just the ones that we addressed tonight, or, okay?
Yep, I think you already got them, so.
Wonderful.
Mister Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I do have some, some questions of procedure, if we could.
Commissioner Elton?
Uh, Commissioner Thomas, I have a question for you, I've reviewed the, um, policies and procedures for the planning commission. Your county ordinance and the state law regarding alternates, and I know we have them, and that's in your county code. But there's no provision, uh, about how they are used, and I'm gonna ask that the county commission with the county attorney. Specify in the county code, the county zoning ordinance, when and how those alternates are.
Actually. To, I, hold on.
You have, you have a practice, but you don't have.
Clarification, is this an approved agenda topic that we can?
No, I'm just, it's discussion, discussion.
But this is not a discussion on the agenda topic, so we're allowed to discuss this.
Okay, I can answer that.
No, no, please, I'm asking Rochelle.
Just, just, if I could just interject real quick, why don't we run that through, why don't we run that through Rochelle to follow up on that one? I think that's a great question, clarification kind of a deal, so let's just ask Rochelle if she'll follow up on that and bring that back to us.
Thank you.
I, I think it was a good clarification, so, thank you.
It's a great question, there are just certain things we can discuss and can't discuss, and they're not approved agenda.
So we can bring up any item for discussion, we just can't act on anything unless it's on the agenda.
That's why I was asking, aren't we allowed to talk about it?
Yes.
Because, as you know, we've had our hands tied.
That was in your open meetings.
We're discussing things. So, okay, wonderful, thank you.
So, just another item of question of discussion, your rules say that the chairman of the planning commission can rule on all matters of procedure. You can rule on all matters of procedure, if we think you're out of line, we can outvote you and change that. So my recommendation in the future would be that you open the public hearing, and you close the public hearing, and not require a vote or motion for that, and I think we'll streamline it. That's a matter of procedure.
It's easy, okay, cool, thank you.
I, I just.
No, I like that, good observation.
I know some do, but some don't, but this says you have, you can control all the procedure, unless we outvote you. So if you said I wanna close the public hearing, I'd say, I'm making a motion, we keep it open?
Okay.
Thank you.
I move we adjourn.
So moved, although, do you favor say aye?
Aye.
Wonderful, we are adjourned, thank you all, thanks. Commissioner Elton, Commissioner Dow, Commissioner Curtis.
Backstrom.
Backstrom, thank you.